...organization meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
At this time, I'm pleased to administer the oath of office for our newly elected and re-elected members, Sue Casey and David Metzger. Please stand.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Member, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. If you could sign your oaths and just pass them this way, that would be great. The first order of business is the election of our Board Officers. I will now entertain nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2018-19 school year.
I'd like to nominate Tammy Gorowski for the office of President.
Are there any other nominations? And we now need a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations. Please stand for your oath.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now entertain nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education for the 18-19 school year.
I'd like to nominate Linda DiAgadi, please.
A second.
Any other nominations? And we need a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Your oaths are right by Tammy.
Okay.
And I now turn the meeting over to Tammy who will give the Superintendent his oath.
Okay.
It's one of those.
What is that? Right there.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Superintendent.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. This is your case.
Yep.
Okay.
District Clerk, you have to...
And Cindy, can we ask you to uphold the duties of your office and to the best of your ability? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Linda?
Did I already do this?
Linda did hers.
I didn't.
You did hers.
She can just sign it.
Yeah, we just signed them.
Okay. Okay.
Officially call this meeting to order. And first item of business, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Any adds? Yes.
We're going to add under five A, new business. We need to add a fifth item and it is resolution for personnel action.
Okay, can we have a motion to amend the agenda? Jan, and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Next order of business is the reorganization meeting and all of the appointments that go along with that. Everybody's received these materials. Are there any questions about these appointments?
Just a couple of changes. Appointments, you guys noticed, we have a new Deputy Treasurer this year, Christine Quinlan, our previous Deputy Treasurer, taking a position in another district. And we also have a new internal auditor, letter K, Hungerford Vinton LLC was the RFP respondent that made it through the process there as well. So just two changes to point out for this year.
We should probably point out too, in letter J, Mango, Metzger, Bar Company is still...
Correct, yes, thank you.
Is still on...
Ray Wagon. They have a name change for the company now.
Okay. So can we have a motion to accept the annual reorganization meeting appointments?
Are you doing them by Roman numerals or the whole thing?
Can we do the whole thing?
Oh, we may want to talk about some of the prices and stuff.
How about voting on Roman numeral one to Roman numeral six?
Okay.
And then we'll do fees and charges right after that.
And see if there's any discussion. Can we have, okay, can we have a motion to accept appointments from Roman numeral one through six?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Linda, thank you. Motion carries. So for section six?
Seven.
Seven.
First. Yeah, ask Brian if, or Brian, are there any changes in Roman numeral seven?
So any changes, one change with athletic admissions?
Eight or nine or ten, sorry.
Yep. For students, we are suggesting no fee for students, period. I think we were one of the last school districts, notably on the east side of Monroe County, that was actually charging visiting students. So we did some research and homework on that over the year to see where everybody was at. And I think by allowing all students in with no fee, as long as they're showing ID, we're in line with everybody else. So there's one change on that. Holding school lunch prices the same as they were this previous year. Remember, last year was the first year we went to the tiered model for all three levels. And school breakfast is being held the same. Then our personnel charges for rental and usage have all gone up based on our contractual costs escalating as well for all those usages.
How did the tiered model work for the school lunches? Did you hear back? I mean, did we come out okay or in the red or?
Well, you know, we just closed the books on Friday for the year. I don't think that, my early feelings are is the tiered model, you know, I think it helps us align to with what the USDA pricing policy is and structure and it kind of makes sense considering the portion sizes all have to be different at all three levels.
I think it's fair for kids.
As far as participation, I still don't think it makes an impact. That's more on the rules and regulations.
Okay. I was just going to ask a question about the per mile rental of buses. Can that be changed anytime during the year if needed? Or is this set and...
Yeah, the Board is always able to amend things if information comes along.
We've never done that, but I was thinking, you never know what's going to happen with gas prices, so.
Yeah, I try to wait to the last very minute to look at what our year-to-date was and use that as a projection going forward, so.
Thank you.
And we're okay with music? There's no change there?
Nope.
Okay. As long as they're okay.
And I do just want to point out too, we started making this change on the actual structure of the document when the minimum wage increases started going to effect. So you'll see the suggested is actually not a July 1 date, it's a January 1 date for many of the salary changes because of that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve seven through nine of the reorganization agenda. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item of business is to solicit speaking time for any visitors, so it's our policy to allow anyone to come in and speak to the Board should they wish to address the Board. And is there anybody wishing to address the Board? Okay, thank you. De instructional reports is the next item on the agenda. And we have an update on a future capital project. And friends from LaBella are here to provide us with that information.
Working two laptops here. I feel like I just shrunk.
This is a high table.
That's very high. Tell Mr. Vice President it was nice of him to show up.
The newest one under... We're just getting used to this computer. Goofy. Did you find it, Sue?
Not yet, but go ahead. I've read it, so I can...
Thanks. I'll monkey with it. Okay, please go ahead, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Tonight I have with me Dan Peters, our Principal Engineer and Architect from LaBella and Associates. I believe many of you have met before at a previous Board Workshop. And Alex Dibble from Campus Construction Management. So we're just going to run through some updates based off of that workshop we had back in end of April, beginning of May, I believe it was now, about the capital project and planning and what's going on. So feel free to jump in with questions as we go forward. So just a quick review of what's going on and what we have planned. Elementary and the Willink and Schrader libraries were in the original proposal. Thomas Technology Wing improvements to that whole section of Thomas. High school athletic fields getting redone. District-wide parking and traffic flow improvements. Structural and facility repairs throughout the district. A second phase of playground improvements for a total cost of just about $58.7 million. That was what we originally proposed back in a couple months ago. So we've had some additions since then that we've discussed through that workshop, went back to the drawing board with LaBella and campus. So the purchase of the Basket Road facility from the town of Webster is included now for the district to operate that facility. Some safety and security also was a concern at that workshop, so we took a look at some things we could do with that. So vestibule renovation in the buildings, or what we could do with doors, flooring, access points, we added that in. As well as one of the other items was that needed to be done in many of our elementaries and Thomas High School, was the windows needed to be replaced. So we thought we could do a combined two-for-one with that, replace the windows, that needed to be done. But also with all buildings, put on the first floor, a security-type film on the windows as to prevent unnecessary outside access or, you know, as a security enhancement for anything on the first floor of all of our buildings. So in essence, encasing those windows.
What does that actually mean?
So, go ahead.
Not just the windows, but in addition to the windows, the doors, there's a film that vendors make, we have to allow for three because obviously New York state law. But they put the film on the outside of the glazing to, you know, slow protrusers down. So it basically buys you time in case of an event. The film doesn't allow for...
It's like safety glass, doesn't break right?
Yeah, safety glass has an embedded film, you know, it's kind of like an embedded laminate that holds the glass together when it... It's not bulletproof. It's a bullet will penetrate this film, you know, some bullets won't, but it's not a ballistics-rated film. What it does is it just, it tints as well as slows access down, so you can't just break the window and get in. It stridates itself and you have to really cut through to get in and it's very difficult to penetrate by doing that. A bullet will go through the film, though. So it typically in buildings we've been recently working with, we've done an audit and through different audit agencies, one is Armored One with our team, we go through and assess, you know, the windows, the doors, and any other ways that somebody could get in the building and you're basically trying to buy time.
It's edible, man.
It's edible, yeah.
So it prevents a rock or a hammer?
Yes, a rock or a hammer wouldn't be able to get through unless they, you know, cut the hole big enough and you threw a rock through the hole, but it's going to take you, you know, a lot of time to do that. But essentially, again, it buys you time.
I believe recently, within the past year, Gates Childs used something similar and they had somebody that tried to gain access into the building using an axe, I think through the main entrance, and it slowed them down, gave the responding police officers time to stop them before he got into the building. I think this was about a year ago. Something very similar to that, if you remember that news article.
And then in the windows that need to be replaced, those windows, the film is kind of embedded with the glass, it doesn't make it any better, it just is more cost-effective because you're not putting it on windows that already exist, so.
Is it invisible? Does it impact?
Yeah, there's different levels that you can get. Some are invisibles, but we're actually assessing the right one, meaning you might want to have a reflective tint to it so you can't see inside. So we're assessing that, the cost isn't any different. And so we may end up going that route, we're going to get some samples to see what makes a lot of sense, you know, again, to help save time and not see activity inside, that might be an option we end up going with.
Is there any, anything that can be used by, say, police, if they wanted to get it through that window? I don't know why, but if they wanted to, they had a tool or something to cut through that?
I don't believe they make a special tool to cut through this. You know, one of the ways, especially for fire, firemen egress through, you have to have an egress window, a rescue window, they call it, and that's a window that's on a handle.
Yep.
And so those are lockable, but the fire department has, you know, a tool that can break through that. Again, it's not an instant thing, but, you know, the means of extracting somebody out of a building is typically, in a school building, is through that window type. So, you know, will the fire department have something to get in there quicker? I mean, that's a very good question. I don't know that they actually have a tool that can cut this stuff, but they're all familiar with it, you know, being installed and it's something that I think they're addressing.
And all Webster first responders have access to our buildings.
So they have knowledge of the new window covering or...
I wouldn't, yeah, they will. But they all, all Webster police officers have a master key into our buildings.
Yeah, okay.
Also, along with the safety and security we added too, we have a very huge problem with our radios constantly going in and out across the district from building to building, communication and transportation-wise. So we looked at, one of the things that is a real concern to us from a safety standpoint is when our buses are going everywhere and they lose radio contact with us. They lose radio contact with us when they go down by Mario's in the dugout, there's spots on Lake Road where they go out all the time, there's spots where we can't get signals in different parts of our building. And that has a lot to do with our system. And one of the things we're hampered by is how close we are to the lake and needing Canadian approval to increase our output. So we have started to kick the tires on, one, turning it digital, which removes some of those, if not all of the dead spots that we're traversing. And also exploring, piggybacking with other municipalities, namely the county, of possibly going onto their network to kind of, you know, they've already done a lot of legwork as far as the issues with having to deal with being close to the Canadian border and so possibly looking at that as well. But we wanted to add that in here because it's a safety and security concern and it's one of the things we talked about at that workshop, to come back and do some additional safety and security concerns, especially when our buses are going 24/7, you know, that winter storm that also then spots up for our girls' basketball team that's playing a game at, you know, on the parkway out to Hilton, you know, we want to be in communication with them. Right now, we don't have confidence that we'll be able, yeah. Exactly, yep, there's another perfect example of ski club and having the handheld radios that will tie into the system. So that was an addition. Plank North adding a generator, for those of you in that area familiar with how often the power goes down. So we wanted to look at generator improvements at Plank North. Also, Thomas Pool mechanical upgrades. There is some severe needs for that pool to have its pump and some of the other internal workings of that pool upgraded to keep it going. So total cost escalated up about $11 million to $69.5 million. One of the things that was left out, obviously that was brought up at the budget workshop, was how about some addition Willink classrooms on the second floor, perhaps in those areas that are overlooking, that's kind of some open space, how could we better utilize that? So it's really, you know, when we took a look at that, very cost prohibitive, to be able to do four or six classrooms on that second floor, you'd be able to build a whole fourth wing on Willink for what it would take to redo the inside. And unfortunately, we don't have the student population that would warrant the state saying, oh yeah, you could add a fourth wing and we'll give you aid for it. So unfortunately, that was left out as one of the, one of the items that we looked at.
But we get two extra pickleball courts.
Brian?
Yeah.
How did the town end up with the Basket Road facility? Did Mr. Bolter sell it to them or, you know, I mean, and going back ways, or did he deed it to them?
I know the facility was purchased, well, not purchased, was built by a grant from the state.
Oh, okay.
As far as, I'd have to go check the records to see who originally owned the piece of property.
There's two Basket Roads properties. There's one off the soccer field and then there's the baseball.
Oh, okay, yep.
Looks like it was the stadium.
Yeah, so back in 2007, Senator Mizolio procured a $1.2 million grant?
I believe it was that.
$1.2, $1.5 million grant to convert that, which is now parkland, converted into that stadium that we saw, that we now have. And so we are, we are talking with the town regarding, you know, taking over that property. And we, and so that turf in about two or three years, the turf will need to be replaced. The land itself has a value of about $325,000. And we may very well have to actually transfer monies from the district into the Parkland Fund or the Parkland Trust for the town. And just because it's, we have to make sure that we're playing by the rules. And so that's why Brian added that as an extra cost, because it's not only the turf that we'll have to replace, but it's also perhaps the value of the land. But one of the great things is that, you know, it's, we know that with that, with that asset within our district, even though this property, even though this capital project has us adding turf at both high schools, there's still a need for turf across the community and certainly for our kids as well, maybe not so much at the varsity level. So, and we, I think we can also perhaps use that as a revenue stream, most of, you know, at least seven months out of the year, with tournaments and things that we think that we could be able to run ourselves.
So the cost of replacing the turf on that field at Basket Road is included in there?
Correct. Oh, no, sorry.
No, it is not, because it's still usable. So to redo anything at Basket Road is not edible. The state will not give us any funds like it would if we did something at one of our buildings, because it's not attached to any of our buildings. It's the exact opposite of the Aquatic Center, when we built that in partnership. That was on our campus, it was connected to Schrader. We got aid to do that in joint partnership because it was on our, on our campus and we were doing it. Basket Road is so far away from everything, even though we are the, I think, the number one tenant and user of that facility, I actually just signed off today on the spring sports that used it, they would not give us any aid whatsoever. But, so that's a couple years down the road. They don't give us aid, but the cost that we have in this project for that is to purchase, to cover that in kind, transfers under, because the comptroller gets involved in this and we have to give equal value. But also, it doesn't matter if the state won't give us aid, they're going to look at it and say, you're still not up to our SED code. So regardless, if we could get a couple, three, four more years out of the turf, they might come to us and say, well, this part isn't handicap accessible, it's a school property, you're going to have to go make that happen now. So we're carrying some extra money beyond that cost to perhaps prepare for some of those things that come once we, because we still go through the process and submit drugs for the purchase of it and so they have it on file, but they might say, your bathrooms aren't up to, there is no bathrooms. You're going to need, it's a district facility, you're going to need to provide restroom facilities.
Yet if they tell, if they're telling you what you need to provide there, it's still not edible?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a cost analysis, cost-benefit analysis with this? Meaning, how much is going to cost us as far as the purchase price and the replacing the fields and any other possible upgrades and then potential income we would be getting?
I don't have exact numbers until we take ownership and really see, I know how much we're paying to use the facility in rental fees.
Yeah, that could go into the analysis.
Correct. But I don't know who else is using it, really. We have a decent idea of who else rents it out or what their, what their usage is, but we'd have to really get in there and ask for that data to do that, that cost benefit.
Is there any way we could have, I mean, I would feel much more comfortable if I had something upfront as opposed to after we made a decision. Just, you know, I know it won't be as accurate, but I don't want to say yes and then find out later that it's not financially beneficial.
Yeah, I could...
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I would think you could get the information from the town.
In terms of the revenue, in terms of, yeah, in terms of what kind of...
Yeah, I will get that.
Thank you.
We will not be in the black, that's for sure.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, like, especially, especially in the first few years, because we're going to be, because we'll be adding $1.1 million in turf. But long-term, if we look 10... But long term, if we look 10 years out, 15 years out, it's like, okay, this sort of, this makes sense because perhaps we can get to something close to cost neutral.
So once the district acquires this property, doesn't anything become aidable for capital improvements to it?
Nothing.
Okay.
It's not attached to a building. Has to be attached.
So why, so you, so long term, it will be cost neutral or beneficial, that's your?
We don't know, it'll be close to that, I would expect, long term.
Any other questions? Okay, so just to take a look at the final cost breakdown. We presented by building and showed you a breakdown, I thought I'd summarize it by kind of area of work. So parking lots, right now are just a little under $8 million. A lot of that is at the elementary schools, that has remained relatively stable. But some of this parking lot work may be not aidable, we have to work through that because the state, in its infinite formulae, wisdom, you know, puts a cap at some of our site work, so we might play around and, and work with that number a little bit by the time we get back to you at the end of August, beginning of September. Playgrounds, phase two, so now at the conclusion of this, all the elementary schools will have extremely equal facilities. They will have one primary and one upper elementary kind of play system that are of the same age and same style. And so there will be a level of uniformity amongst the seven elementary buildings. Windows getting added at Clem North, Clem South, Plank South, Schlegel State and Thomas. And then, as we discussed, the safety film at all schools, all eleven, all the other, one, two, three, four, five, six. The other five buildings will be getting the safety film on the first floor. Vestibule improvements were added at all schools except DeWitt because we had already planned to do something at DeWitt because it was a high need area. So now all the other schools will have some vestibule upgrades as well. Library is still the same, remain as we earlier presented, same library renovations. Some of those HVAC upgrades, added the generator at Plank North, the Thomas Pool pumps. And Willink system upgrade, I believe we discussed that, along with Willink in general. And adding a boiler system there to kind of help out the geothermal. Sometimes it's difficult to regulate the temperature in that building because of that. So a little, little boost in the HVAC for Willink as well. Athletics, you know, we added some storage based on our initial conversations at the workshop with scoreboards and the Basket Road facility as well. Right now, we have a yet to be determined spot. We want to program where that would work best. It might very well end up under the bleachers or it could end up tucked in the side. It's just, we're going to let these guys design it to the best of and most cost effective, maximum manner possible.
Right now, we, we, it could fit under the bleachers, but it's not attached to the bleachers. The state then pulls in the bleacher structure as part of the building and we want to avoid that, so.
Because then you'll have some occupancy requirements.
Gets into ratings and stuff that really isn't necessary, but the code mandates you do it.
The digital radio conversion, we have a lot of radios, a lot of buses. So that is a cost increase, like I said, added for safety and security. And we've had some initial meetings about joining the county system and getting some high quality radios that we could rely on in case of emergency. Classroom renovations, included in that number is the carryover, the pegboard. We don't think we're going to be able to get that done in this project due to the higher bids we got on the first round and what we're expecting to see in the second round of bidding coming up for Spry and for the Thomas Library. Especially with Spry, as we've dug into this building a little bit more. We find that the mechanicals in the basement perhaps will need a little bit more than what we initially planned for and expected. So we want to make sure that is done. So the pegboard is getting carried over into the next project because of that. We're doing some more additional abatement. And the Thomas Tech Wing is a large chunk of these classroom renovations as well. And then some building renovations, the Schrader bathrooms and the back wall on the southeast side by the athletic entrance wing back there, if you look right at that wall, you'll see some cracking. So we want to take care of that wall repair. And then hallway door replacements at Schrader and Thomas as well. Some of the fire doors and the smoke doors needed to be replaced, so do some building renovations there as well. And then, of course, the bus garage, we presented, no, no changes there whatsoever from, from initially presented. So our total is $69.5 million. And then what's our debt service, how are we doing this? As you can see, this is the same slide we shared at the workshop, that in 2023, 24 and 24, 25, you see this large drop off of debt from previous projects coming on the board, so we are going to try to avoid that roller coaster drop down because then eventually you'll bring it back up. So we're going to try to smooth that out. So what I've tried to do is show you, the blue is what we originally presented. And then the yellow is updated with these, these current numbers. So year where the largest drop is in 24, 25. So we have some debt service reserve, we'd like to smooth out those two high years to bring it down. But we want debt to remain constant around $10.5 million per year, which is 6% of our budget. So this has a minimal tax rate impact with this consistency model. So you're not fluctuating all over the place like a roller coaster. Consistent, same expectation year to year.
So is that generally what school districts spend, is about 6% of their budget on debt?
Generally, it's in the high, high single digits to low teens, I would say, between eight and 12%.
So we're on the lower end of that?
I'd still say we're, we're on the lower end. We do a lot more in-house than I think a lot of districts do.
Well, yeah, we can because we're big.
Because we, we're bigger, we can. So I think that helps us stay on the lower side of our facility improvements. Because projects that our B and G staff do and don't even think about, most districts don't even think about entertaining in-house and just immediately do it outside. Especially when it comes to, I'd say paving, we do a lot with the town of Webster when it comes to upgrading and paving our own facilities. A lot of school districts don't even entertain that and just throw it right into a capital project.
Have we anticipated additional costs with the unexpected tariff for?
Yeah, we were able to increase the escalation rate originally when we met last time. It was escalated up because we'll be out some three years before we even go to bidding. And we carried a half percent higher for each year with that anticipation. And these numbers that we put together are based on numbers that we actually have seen in this last bid, bid market in the spring, so they're the most recent that we, we've had available.
So Brian, can you remind us, in terms of carrying this debt at 6% or $10.5 million per year, what does that do for us for tax cap? Does this have an impact on tax cap? Does this?
It shouldn't have really an impact on it. Our tax cap will kind of stay the same because our tax cap is always based on what, what local share is. So this also helps us have a consistent local share where some years maybe your local share is smaller, some years it's larger. This is trying to take that fluctuation out as well. So that's where you see when one year a district could have like a, their tax cap could be five and a half, then the next year it's like .6. And it all has to do with how your local share is playing out when it comes to capital projects. So one year you might be paying a lot more based on the timing. And then next year, okay, the aid caught up to it, so now you have a, a smaller local share. So we're trying to plan this out so it stays stable and is, is uniform and doesn't have fluctuations like that.
It's impossible to predict everything. There's a lot of talk now about mid 2019, our economy tanking. Any thought given to that? I mean, the national economy, I don't, I know you said there's some, something built in.
One of the reasons why also, Mark talked about, a lot of it has to do with, you could say the tariffs and the way, you know, somebody tweets out one thing and the, you know, stock market reacts to it. But one of the strongest signs of a good economy is our bid prices going up because we're, we're now an afterthought when it comes to the construction market. Because they're going for private industry, going for quick, easy, high profit margin jobs. And public works projects, especially in New York State, are overwhelmingly arduous with paperwork. And people aren't going to be jumping at it if they got tons of work over here. We're going to see a minimize, minimized population of people over here bidding on our projects. And when that pool gets smaller, they know it and they can escalate the, the costs to it. So, you know, we haven't really thought that far ahead, but I think we're, we'll be, we'll pretty good overall economically.
Yeah, I agree with what Brian just said. What we've seen right now is there's a shortage of manpower and contractors have their plate full. So if that is something we see in 2019, I remember back to when we were 2010, when we had that recession, there was a lot of bidders and we were getting very good bid prices because people did not have that work. So it, it's good for the economy that, when that's up, but it's bad for our bids. But it's the other way around, we typically see more bidders and better bid numbers. So if that's something that we see in 2019, it could be beneficial to this project.
I was thinking about the community, you know, taking it apart, that could affect all of us. People that could be losing jobs next year, also, what potential profits that could have caused. And it's impossible to predict, mostly they're off.
Yeah. The state aid that is associated with the project is always locked in. So that's, that offsetting cost is always there. So next steps, you know, look for formal Board of Education approval. Late August, early September, if there's any feedback on tonight, if there's, gives us, you know, a couple of months to adjust again. If there's anything else, any, you know, switching around. Begin vote planning for December of 2018 with a board approval in, in that timeframe. And then really start to plan the minutia on how best to package this project to maximize the aid. Like I said, with some of the site work, we have to go do our due diligence and maybe perhaps move some pieces around and, and, and plan that. And then also, you know, we wait until a form of board approval because we don't want to get people excited about a project until you guys give us the go ahead. So we'll, then we'll work with, get our focus groups on these areas. Say, okay, here's our conceptual thinking, let's, let's drill down, get your input, what, you're on the ground, what's going to work best? And, and do that planning, very similar how we got the student voice at Thomas and at Spry with the library here and kind of work from the ground up with that. And then publish our legal notices, public hearing, and then getting out and talking to the buildings about what's, to everybody, what's going to, what's in this project for everybody's buildings.
So on August 14th, we have a regular meeting and a workshop. So I do think that that's a date for us that, that we should plan on a final decision from the board. But if there's, depending on what your reaction is tonight, I'd like to begin to work with, work on a, on a communication plan with the same group that we had a couple of years ago that helped us with that plan. And I'd like to start that, at least begin preliminary discussions with them probably next week.
I'm thinking, maybe we can just follow up with you and ask, I think there's some things that would be nice to have pictures of and that might help us all visualize what some of these improvements are going to look like, the film, for example.
Yeah. We could put that together, we could do that for the 14th, get some, some of these areas that we're looking to improve, show you some of what they look like now.
What the vestibule might look like, that sort of thing. I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
And I know we can never be quote "safe enough," but these safety items that we're adding, are these like?
I would say they're practical.
Practical, yeah, that, I was searching, what is the word I want? Or have you used them in other buildings as?
It's school versus fortress?
Yeah.
I think, you know, if you ever talk to Mr. Neil Flood, you know, we, we could lock down Yeah, tomorrow. But I mean, these are practical, they, we do, I think we're far leaps away from what we do compared to a lot of other districts as far as safety and security.
That's what I really wanted to know.
This, to me, these are some of those next logical steps that will make an impact, will make a difference, but aren't intrusive.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're seeing across the state, probably in seven or eight districts right now that we're actually bidding the film to be installed. And, you know, they've made improvements on it over the last probably six or seven years. I think the need for it has become more and more recently, not just in our state and states all, you know, all, all over. So the, the technology's getting better, which means the product's getting a little more affordable. Before, you know, eight, nine years ago, it used to be very expensive to use this. But again, it's, it's a time buyer, you know, you're not, you're not making because you have the glass, but you also have the window frame or the door frame and, you know, most of them are made out of aluminum and, you know, a, a round, depending on the type, can go through concrete block, you know, so window's not going to do much to that. But it, you know, they've proven, they've done studies, there's analysis that have been done that you can research and find out that the film buys you time and that's really the point around it.
And I like the fact that it's not a single issue, it's not, you're not just focused on someone with a gun because a lot of times it's people trying to break in using all kinds of other implements, you know?
I wasn't here for the, the DeWitt vestibule, what, are the vestibules being redone for safety reasons or aesthetics? Or just they're old or?
Yeah, there's, part of the updates on DeWitt is there's, there's some abatement that's being done in the ceiling, so that's coming out. So we're cleaning all that up. The flooring, that's an old slate that is cracking and you just don't use slate anymore. So all that's coming up and the petamat that's in there that, you know, helps with, you know, walk off water and that kind of thing. And then just painting, the whole thing's getting painted and, and upgraded. But at DeWitt, there's already access and a buzzer and a door that doesn't allow you into the building. You have to go through the main office, so you're directing traffic. And, and, you know, that's what we're also planning on doing at the other buildings because you don't want somebody just walking in, of course, you want them to come into the office.
Can I just back over to the 14th and an analysis of, cost analysis of that, the Basket Road facility?
Any other questions? Just consider all of this for a bit and see where we land on August 18th, 14th.
14th, yes.
Just a rough estimate, it's, we got $69 million, 70% aidable on that, roughly?
Probably, I'd think it's a, the only things that would not be aidable in this project is Basket Road.
And some of the drive or the parking lots.
Yeah.
But it's, we're still talking about 70%.
Yeah, we'll probably lose about 5% of our overall aid on this.
That's a safe number.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing and for, for the update. I can imagine you can expect maybe to receive a couple emails or questions if people have follow up or like to clarify any further information, but thank you very much.
We'll try to get that information out to you sooner rather than later. I don't want, I don't want you guys to see it for the first time on August 8th.
Right, yeah.
So we'll try to get it out to you in the next couple.
We'll make a couple phone calls asking if I can do everything tomorrow.
Brian's on vacation for the next 10 days, but if it's best, that'll be, we'll try to get you guys something before August 1st. This way you can take a look at it.
Digest it.
And then we can come back on the 14th, that's okay.
Take one vacation day.
Okay, thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you, thanks Mark.
Okay, now the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tammy. So we begin our annual reorg board meeting and this actually signals the beginning of our next school year, the 18, 19 school year. First of all, welcome Mr. Metz. First of all, welcome Mr. Metzger to the board. It's great to have you. And I'd also like to make sure that we thank one more time our outgoing board member, Bill Kent, for his service to our Board of Education. Now, just a few weeks ago, I had the honor and pleasure of shaking the hands of almost 700 of our alumni now, Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas, as they crossed the stage at RIT's Gordon Fieldhouse. And the weather cooperated on that day. For each ceremony at the end, it gave us about a 20-minute slot of non-rain and so the kids got to do their cap toss. It was great. This graduation, as you can see the pictures on your screen, my favorite day of the year. And we shared photos and memories and words that attempted to capture that all this day means for our students. I am continually amazed at what our students are able to accomplish despite any challenges that they may face. So thanks to the love and the support of their families and their friends and our outstanding faculty and staff, it was an amazing day and it was an amazing year for our outgoing seniors. So you've seen some of the photos on the screen as I give this report. And if you'd like to experience the graduation ceremonies again, they are now running twice daily on spectrum 1301, channel 1,301. And we're going to attempt also to have a link off of our website as well. So thank you, class of 2018. We can't wait to see what you guys do next. And that ends my report.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Yes, it was a very special day. Moving on now to board business, we have some new business. The treasures report. And Brian, if you could share that with us, the next few items on the agenda belong to you.
Sure. Treasures report, nothing really new for the month of April to report there that stands out. Just, you'll see, you'll notice we get a large chunk of our Medicaid reimbursement in the month of April as compared to some other months that gets processed. So that is a large portion on the revenue side. Interest rates have stayed stable, but you probably have noticed also, point out, we have more invested into KeyBank than in previous months because of the rates in the U.S. Treasury bills were going up, so we're moving some funds around in KeyBank. And overall, that's about it for the treasures report for the month of April.
Does anybody have any questions? Can we have a motion to accept the treasures report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The revenue and expense report.
So this is our third quarter report that we provide for the board. First up is just a summation of our, all of our line items based by function area that we report to the state. So it's just the third quarter report of how much we spent, what's encumbered moving forward. And then all of our budget transfers that also have occurred during that quarter for you to review, to see where we're moving things to and from. And then also all the revenues we've taken in, in the third quarter.
Any questions regarding?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's line 1010, the Board of Education. Did we over, did it cost us too much to go to the national conference? I'm seeing, oh no, I'm looking at contract and then I'm looking at the subtotal. So I'm okay there.
Everything, yeah. Nothing, nothing's in the negative there.
Yep, all right.
Okay, so may we have a motion to accept the revenue and expense report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next are the 2018-2019 board liaison assignments and committee participation. So we have all of our liaison assignments to each of the schools. And are there any questions or changes requested to be made for the liaison assignments?
Is there value to change?
It's always, it's nice to ask.
That's why I'm asking, I mean, I'm okay. It's, I'm just asking that.
I'm fine either way. I'm happy to change and, you know, mix it up a little, but I'm also happy to stay.
All of these are just the PTSA?
Just for our schools right now? And then we'll talk about Monroe County?
You're looking just at the PTSA building assignments?
To just take the place of building.
Yeah, like north.
So PTSA meetings are usually held monthly at each building? And you would attend and then come back and share with the board anything pertinent? And then other events, if it's possible to go to, it's, you know, they usually appreciate having the support and visibility of board members. So whenever your schedule permits, that's also okay?
Your grandkid goes to Clem's or Clem's South, right?
Right.
Would you rather, do you want to change and do north and south? I mean, it's totally up to you. I mean, do you like being where your grandkid is or?
I'm there once a week. I volunteer in the classroom, but, you know, it doesn't matter.
I mean, it's your call on that one because I've done them all.
Yeah. So I'm at Clem's North. We could switch Clem's North and South if you wanted, so.
It's up to you. Do you, are you interested?
You make the call.
Yeah.
There's advantages being there, there's advantages not being there.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. We could switch.
I would suggest that you don't.
Yeah.
Don't switch because this way you go in and when you're at Clem's South, you're a grammar.
Yeah.
And you're not so much a board liaison.
Yeah.
So I would just, I would keep it clean for you, but you can go to another building if you'd like, but.
I'm happy at Clem's North.
Anyway.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's staying put.
Sorry.
Okay.
That means Dave gets Clem's North?
Clem's North.
You okay with that, Dave?
Sure. I don't think I've ever been in that building. It'd be nice.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I like the people there.
It's Carm's old building.
My old building? I was a student.
I was a teacher there.
Yeah, she was my teacher.
You were a student here, too.
That was my first building.
Okay, so then if we look at district and community committees, audit committee, budget advisory, policy, when, strategic planning committee. For the budget advisory committee, I think it has worked well in the past when we rotate and everybody gets to choose a couple of dates that work and be part of the process. Does anybody have any?
No one's going to change Sue from being the chair of policy.
No.
They'll wrestle that way.
And I don't want anybody to change.
No.
She runs that smoothly.
It's all her.
So it sounds like that's all okay as well? Do you have a que, oh, I'm sorry.
If something, I'd like, I'd be interested in the policy committee if someone, can we have four people or?
Can't have four.
They have four.
Becomes a quorum?
Mike Dustin made it to one meeting, so I don't think.
You might be willing to give that up.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. Let's substitute Mr. Metzger for Mr. Dustin.
Okay. Hopefully he won't get upset.
We'll add Mr. Dustin to the audit committee.
Okay.
Because then he'll give you three. He's a money guy, so.
It's not very demanding either.
Correct, because only a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
But audit's important.
Yeah, it's okay.
We'll still go.
You're still there with Sue.
Any other changes or recommendations to the committees?
The only thing I want to ask, Linda, just let me know if you can't make a meeting.
I will, definitely.
Thank you.
I think I went home.
I think you must have because I didn't hear from you.
I think you did.
Yeah.
It was great.
It's awesome.
They were awesome. And then moving up the page, the Monroe County School Board Association Committee's legislative committee is open. Labor relations, are you interested in?
I can do it again.
Information exchange, I'm willing to do again as well.
These are every, they're on Wednesdays.
Do you have the sheet right here?
Like 12 to 1, Dave. So we weren't sure if you were able to sneak away.
We'd have to get out of school.
Yeah, because you're probably, it means about an hour and a half, hour and 40 minutes away from school.
During the day, 12 to 1.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
They're usually all held at the Doubletree Inn in Henrietta as well?
They are, yep.
They're good meetings. Some places have a four o'clock.
I'll be at all the meetings anyways.
If a lot of people want to go, they'll have it.
So. So if there's a four o'clock meeting, we'll let you know. And then this way you'll be able to legislate it. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's the state.
Yeah.
Sometimes presentations are shared on the website, so it's easy and certainly anybody who's in attendance can share back with you as well.
I bet you will, right?
Okay, so information exchange.
That also means then that Carm and Tammy, you're aware of the August 16th meeting? Just making you aware of that.
Yes, thank you.
No, I was not. Are you aware?
It's on the 16th.
The board president, superintendent.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's at policies, too.
Yeah.
Oh, it's out there.
We'll have it on our calendar. Yeah, it's already in. It's all good.
We're working hard on it.
Yeah. That's good.
So is someone going to take Bill's place for information exchange? You're going to stay on that?
I'm going to stay on that.
Okay.
And I'm at every meeting anyways.
And you're there, so.
Do you want to do one?
I might be able to attend some of these this year because I think my babysitting is decreasing significantly, the four-year-olds.
You can attend any meeting you want. It's just that what we're putting you down for is to be a voting member. And the voting member actually, it's only important for the first meeting when you actually vote on what topics you want to talk about.
Okay.
Other than that, you never vote.
Right. And you just need to let them know you're coming so they have enough chairs and lunches for you.
Dave, we can put you down if I just let them know.
It might be tough to get in, but we can just put you down.
Yeah. We don't want to lose our voting. Yeah, we need to have somebody that, because that's the one place. Do they vote generally on the position papers or is that all?
Position papers are voted on the legislative committee, but it gets sent to steering, which gets sent to executive.
So there's tons of review.
Right.
So would it be better if I did that than information?
Yeah, I mean, if we know that there's somebody that can consistently make a meeting, that'd be really good.
So.
And then Dave can, you can insert any meeting, any Wednesday that you're able to finagle with Mr. Folkerson.
Yeah, he's been, he's good.
Information exchange, too. You'll also know the topics well in advance so that if there's something of interest, then you could make sure you got to that one.
Okay. And the same with labor.
Yep.
Too.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. All right.
Do we, can we entertain a motion to accept all the liaison assignments for 2018-2019 school year?
So moved.
In a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have Sue Casey in the policy committee. The first reading of new policy use of timeout rooms.
This policy is required because of the new owl program that we're going to have at Schlegel Road School and because the nature of the program, there will be a timeout room if needed, and we had to have a policy on that. Colleen worked on this with our attorney and we tried to get a little, a little more concise and a little shorter, but this is what we got. Yeah, there's a lot of issues here and they really all needed to be attended to here. There's actually some regulation in here, but the state requires that it be in policy.
With a policy, you get a regulation. The policy doesn't try to be the regulation. This is almost.
Both.
Both.
And in the state, when they require things, it has to be in the policy. It can't be in the regulation.
This is pretty much what came to us from the state, isn't it? I mean, we're at ones.
Yes, exactly.
Where you get accepted.
Right.
Make sure we approve this thing.
And so this needs to be approved by the start of school. So if we did first reading today, and if you had any questions or concerns, changes could be made till August 14th would be the second reading and then it could be adopted and all set for the beginning of school. Anybody have any questions? Then we have a motion for.
To accept the first reading? Of the new policy. Yes, please.
So moved.
Second. You got, you can have it.
Tag your it. Okay, then the final item is a personnel issue that we need to address.
So we had during executive session discussed a resolution that I'm recommending that the board adopt in order for us to move forward with a personnel action.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, thank you. Now it's working. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to old business, we have all the items within our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of minutes. There's personnel actions, recommendations on special ed, recommendations of the committee on preschool, special ed, a health benefits request, a lot of CSE appointments, the updated district organizational chart, trips, a lot of information on upcoming planned trips, and a co-op food supply bid.
Just a question on the organizational chart. Maybe I didn't see it. Where does that data processing person fit on that chart?
They would be.
Curriculum supervisor?
They would, they are, they're the same level as a director and they will be reporting directly to Mr. Neenan, the deputy superintendent. Thanks, Mark.
So that would be added?
Yes, we'll add that.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
In a second, by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes our agenda. I'd like to thank Mike Sefalato for all your years of dedication and leadership as president. And I've certainly appreciated being able to work with you and learn from you and extremely.
We've worked together.
Wow. And we are a good board, but thank you very much. I did want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Just giving me 15 hours a week more time.
Well, I appreciate that.
Don't scare her.
And I'm very glad that you're not really going anywhere, so it benefits all of us and Sue as well. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. That concludes our.
Next meeting's August 2nd, there are retreats.
August 2nd retreat, okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're ready.
Thank you all very much. Good night. Good evening.